Hickman, Nebraska, governing body. The city of Hickman abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by Nebraska state law. Notice of meeting and copies of this agenda have been publicly posted prior to the meeting at the Hickman City Hall, Hickman US Post Office, Ustop Market, and the city of Hickman website. There is a participant, participant sign and sheet available and disclosure of meeting recording process notice posted. All individuals requesting to be registered agenda speakers must fill out a registered speaker card and submit it to the recording clerk. The mayor or presiding meeting officer reserves right to deny this request or will call you to the podium when your agenda item is ready to be heard. Presentations, if allowed, may be limited to five minutes per person. Please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record, and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Public hearing testimonies may be limited to five minutes per person. All individuals requesting to hand out documents to city council members must deliver them directly to the city clerk for distribution. The city council may vote to go into executive closed session on any agenda item as allowed by Nebraska state law. The governing body may be excused and reenter the city council meeting room at any time after reconvening open session. If everyone would stand for. Michelle, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Warkhart.
Here.
Norrin.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Seaman.
Here.
DeHodah.
Here.
Cooley.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Communications, I have none at this time, so we will go to item five, the consent agenda. Item five A is approval of the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting minutes. Uh, it's in your electronic packets. For you guys to read. Any questions, comments on that? If not, we will go to item five B, claims and accounts payable report. And with that, we will turn it over to Michelle.
Uh, there's been no changes since I uploaded it yesterday morning.
Can't call.
What was the problem? Was the camera up big? Is the camera up big?
Yes, so the electronic contracting bill there for eleven thousand dollars were for the equipment portions, and the labor will be billed separately. And they finished completing the installation of them today. So we have new security cameras on the north side of the building now, new cameras inside City Hall, and then they reconfigured others, so we have more coverage in the public areas of City Hall.
And then the insurance claim for the gravelly mower, so they, what, what came of that, I guess? I don't remember talking about that. Maybe we did.
Which invoice was that one for?
That's Wheels and Deals.
Wheels and Deals, yeah.
Yep, so, uh, with our insurance company, there was a bit of a discrepancy on the value of the gravelly mower that was insured, which we've updated since then. Um, but our insurance company worked directly with Wheel and Deal to get a discount on that as low as possible that they could do. So our insurance company is not charging us the two hundred fifty dollar deductible because they had the wrong value on there. So we're not getting charged for our deductible this time. And then Wheel and Deal Auto Sales took, um, the government discount in addition to a fifteen hundred dollar discount for the value of the totaled out lawn mower. So alarm and Wheel and Deal, uh, made a deal that, uh, Wheel and Deal would take over that surplus, or not surplus, but that salvaged property since it wasn't salvageable.
So is that what we paid then for a new mower?
We usually pay around fifteen thousand dollars for new mowers.
But wasn't our other one new?
Yes.
So what we, what the insurance, yeah, pay out?
The insurance check will be for a little over eleven thousand.
Okay, so.
So we'll get a check from alarm for eleven thousand dollars to cover that twelve thousand dollars. And they waived the deductible for us, and then they gave the salvage, or they made a deal with the salvage to reduce the price fifteen hundred with the Wheel and Deal company.
Twelve thousand minus.
This is the price.
Minus one thousand.
His original invoice is fifteen hundred dollars higher than that. So this price that the city has to pay is less than fifteen hundred dollars for the salvaged mower.
Then the Olson bill, uh, the, uh, wastewater, is that going to be billed back to Newburg? Is that?
Um, I think this was, um, I have to look at the exact bill. I didn't have a chance to.
I would have thought that would all been billed out by now.
Well, the construction project itself is done, but this is further work being done with some inspections, some inspections and their time on there. And then we're working on trying to get that with the clarifier during the fix as well.
But that, that piece would, and maybe this is what you were getting at, the piece with the other clarifier, we wouldn't be covering that, right? But the one that's.
You think about the one that's broken as warranty.
Right.
That should still be under warranty, and they should keep paying Olson's.
Right.
House of Health.
Building out.
So these, uh, the eight thousand four hundred dollar bill is for services through August second. Um, includes some of the project management, uh, city council meeting attendance. No, that's about a zero, but never mind, scratch that. We are looking at CAD drawings. So maybe they're finishing up some of the CAD drawings with Nate and Jeremy.
Okay. But any bill associated with that head, uh, clarifier, we'll just.
Sure, the warranty portion, yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Kelly or Michelle? If not, we will go to, uh, item five C, uh, statement of accounts and budget cash report as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And I think Carrie's here to present that.
This is the budget cash report through June of two thousand twenty-five, and it has all of the revenues collected in the month of June, and then I do have all of the expenditures to date. So we all have that, and that's pretty much updated completely. Um, let me look at mine so that I can see. It's like we've taken in on the general fund, which includes like the keynote, sales tax, everything, the one thou, or one hundred nine thousand and the street fund, those are the revenues that we've taken in as far as when it goes with the receipts and then the expenditures is what we've spent through the, the month. And then our expenditures to date and the budget expenditures, and then what we have left with the budget and how much of it has been expended as far as percentage wise. We didn't have any debt service payments to make this month, but that's kind of where we are. We have one more payment to make this month, so that'll show up on the September meeting. Um, let's see, our TIF loan, that's paid in full, and then I have the util, uh, our deposits that we've refunded so far. We have got two hundred from last month was, our, from June was refunded, so we have a balance of twenty-three thousand eight hundred one eighty-five still sitting in a liability. Um, and then we have all of our, what we billed for the month for utilities, and then what we collected this month for the utilities, or June, and then revenue that we've come up with to date, and then our budgeted revenue, and then what percentages. Hey, do you want to remind, this is, um, considering it's like sixty-eight, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, we are seventy-five percent of the month, so we're doing pretty good with revenue.
Carrie, or Kelly, whoever, why is the sewer fund, why do we got five million sitting in the budget of eight?
That's our, let me pull it up, because I've got it. That's like the capital improvement. Sorry, if you can hear my pages shifting.
Um, it could be the refinancing hasn't posted yet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
That four million's part there.
Okay, so we, we haven't seen the, have we seen the final bill on the clarifier? On the headworks and all that?
The certificate of pay, yes.
Yeah.
To the con, to the contractor, yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember. But yes, that bomb, then, and the same would be for the water then, or not? Or is that what we had in there for the booster pump and all that?
Um, we have the booster pump in the budget and a couple of other things.
It's in the capital outlay.
We just know these are expenditures as of June, so you're missing July and August. Expenditures are not even here. Okay, because we don't want to talk about that anymore.
Thank you.
And then the same question, I guess, would be for the park fund as well, is that, um, did we have the Scotts Creek in the budget? Is that what that is?
Yes, but the Scotts Creek Trail is actually in the street funds for the budget, and then the parks fund has those expenditures for Terrasque Park.
Oh, okay.
All right, any other questions for Carrie? All right, Carrie, let's go to, uh, sales tax.
All right. Got page one for you here, and this is coming back through, um, April. What we collected in April, and this is what the state has refunded us, or sent to us, excuse us. Um, we've got the sales and use tax, and then consumer use tax, the motor vehicle. Everything. And then our three percent admin fee. On the second page here, this is going to be what we have come total down at the bottom. This is our April returns, and then we have our interest payment to that account. Um, and we have eighteen, one million eight hundred eighty-eight thousand eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents in our account for sales tax currently. And then on page three is our, how did we do compared to last year? And we did, we have a five percent growth.
Is that a, uh, running total, or is that just that?
That's just as of the month. I usually try to get a running total as we get to the end of the year, because usually it kind of. So, yeah, that's just like monthly how we're comparing to each month from the year prior.
All right, any questions for Carrie on sales tax? All right, thank you, Carrie.
You bet.
Since there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Norrin, and second by Mr. Wagner to approve the consent agenda. Michelle, if you could call the roll, please.
Warkhart.
Yes.
Norrin.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Seaman.
Yes.
DeHodah.
Yes.
Cooley.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item six, proclamations, presentations, appointments, affirmations, and introductions. Tonight, we have Jim David Sayer, and he's the director of the Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management, and he's here to give us an update and, uh, speak to us.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you. I welcome the opportunity to share some information. As the mayor said, my name is Jim David Sayer. I'm the director of Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. The next slide just kind of gives you a snapshot of my thirty-nine year history in local government. I've been the director for the last eleven years. The twenty-eight years before that, I was a police officer for the city of Lincoln. I retired as a captain, uh, this time of year in two thousand fourteen. Um, next up gives you an idea of our emergency management staff. I have four paid staff, including me. I have a deputy director, an admin specialist, and a training specialist. A lot of the heavy lifting is done by our volunteers. Um, we're essentially on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so it's nice to have those, uh, volunteer duty officers. We identify a primary and an alternate each month. Uh, they're trained to a higher level to assist me and my paid staff. The nineteen volunteers are representatives from around the county, and then you can see we have twenty-two, what we identify as community liaisons. Hickman has two, uh, your city administrator Kelly is Hickman one, and Thomas Kearns is Hickman two. Uh, all of the volunteers and community liaisons are issued emergency management radios. They're on my email distribution list, and they also receive my text alerts. So if we received a no notice situation that required emergency management to participate, those volunteers and liaisons can be identified, reporting on the radio, and then we kind of, uh, handle whatever the matter is from there. But essentially, based on the strength of those volunteers, that literally gives me countywide coverage, eyes and ears. Um, next up should be our mission areas. Uh, those are the five official ones, emergency management. Uh, one of the cliches is every disaster is a local disaster. Uh, our state and federal representatives in emergency management, they're here to assist the locals. The last two, response and recovery, I think people have a basic understanding of that. When the government representatives in the windbreakers with the block letters on the back show up and say, we're with the government, we're here to help. I think people get, have an appreciation for that response and recovery. Really, a lot of our work is based on those first three, uh, essentially dealing with the matter. The best way to handle a disaster or emergency is to prevent it in the first place. Uh, so again, we put a lot of time and attention into prevention. We also want to protect and mitigate those things that we can't prevent. What can we do to increase our protection or increase our mitigation, uh, decrease the negative impact of those things? So again, when I go to work, uh, in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening, whatever the case may be, those are the mission areas that we focus on. The other thing about it is I don't tell anybody how to do their job. We live in a highly specialized world. Um, the questions that I ask is what's the problem and what do we need to do about it? We have a local emergency operation plan, not only because state law requires it, but because it's a good way to do business. Every county, each of the ninety-three counties in Nebraska has one. It is required by state law, and it is, it is adopted at the county level. So I know there have been some questions in the past about, well, i- is my neighborhood, is my home, is my town or village covered in that? One, it, once it is signed and adopted by the Lancaster County Board, it is. Uh, up until the beginning of this year, the plan was housed on the cloud. Uh, NEMA, the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency, had a contract with Bold Planning. So that's where the LEAP was physically housed. That contract went away at the beginning of this calendar year. We defaulted back to the same word template that had been used in years gone by. But again, the LEAP is the LEAP, so that is kind of our baseline. And as I said, it applies countywide. Um, the subject matter experts that I call on are those ESF representatives, the emergency support function representatives. The federal system has identified fifteen different categories, and they're kind of outlined in my generic, uh, subheadings below that with the public health, safety, and welfare. Obviously, life safety is first and foremost. Up next, a close second to that is, uh, protection of critical infrastructure, and then continuity of operations. So the next screen kind of touches on, uh, some of the things that we focus on when it comes to that. If you're familiar with the acronyms, NIMS or ICS, NIMS, the National Incident Management System. Uh, as we know it today, it's been around since the late nineteen sixties. And again, it's a good way to do business because it identifies roles and responsibilities. Uh, so again, we have that accountability. And again, those priorities, I don't think should come as a surprise to anybody. Obviously, everything that we do, first and foremost, it's life safety. If people are in harm's way, we need to get them out of harm's way. If people are protected, if they're in a good place, we want to make sure that they stay there. Incident stabilization, if we're having a good day, we want to continue down that road. If we're having a bad day, we want to put the brakes on that, minimize, mitigate that to the best of our ability to make sure that a bad day doesn't get any worse. And the last one, property, uh, protection and preservation. Never like to see anybody's personal property get damaged, but you have to have some priorities. So all three of those are important to us, but when we identify those under that incident command system, incident command structure, those are our primary objectives. This is a diagram of the incident command system. You do not need to commit this to memory. Um, I just share it with you because, again, it, it gives us that accountability. If you are assigned a role, if you are given some responsibilities, you know where you stand in the org chart. And I think the most important thing for our boots-on-the-ground individuals who are out there, they need to know who they answer to and who they're responsible for supervising. At the top of the list, there, the top of the pyramid, so to speak, is the incident commander. No matter how large or how small the incident is, you've got to have somebody that's in charge. And that's the nice thing about this incident command system, it's scalable. If it's a big deal that is going to take several days or several weeks to respond and recover from, we may populate every box on the org chart there. Probably ninety, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the, of the situations that we deal with are under the command of that incident commander, and most of those responsibilities fall to that operations section. Planning looks at not where we are today, but where we're going to be tomorrow or the next day, the next operational period. Logistics is all about acquiring the resources that the operations section needs to take care of business. And finance and admin, you've got to make sure that you've got that accountability of who is paying for what. There's a proper process in order to do that. That's where this org structure gives us the be, uh, the ability to do that. I made mention of those community liaisons, and you can see there's a liaison officer just below that incident commander. So I guess an example of that is if the city of Hickman is impacted by whatever the disaster is, and it's an isolated incident to Hickman, we will build that org chart out, but we want to make sure we have a representative, uh, from Hickman in there. That may be that community liaison or whoever is designated. So again, we have those subject matter experts plying their trade, taking care of business. We need to make sure that we've got that, that boots on the ground, that first person. So again, the, the representative for Hickman wouldn't be plugged into, into the org chart other than in that liaison position to make sure that the incident commander and the rest of the structure is familiar with what's going on, kind of have that literal, the, the ownership of it. So like I said, it's a good way to do business because it gives us that across-the-board accountability. Um, next up just kind of breaks down some of the things. I'm responsible for ensuring that our county emergency operations center is ready to go at a moment's notice. And again, we use the incident command structure just because it's a good way to do business. Unified command, if it's a large incident that involves, uh, health, safety, and welfare, law enforcement, emergency, medical, fire, we may need those experts rather than having a single incident commander. We have unified command. Each of those subject matter experts bring their expertise to the table. The joint information center, it's incredibly important that whatever information is released, it comes from the proper channels. It's been properly vetted. If we have the police chief saying one thing and the fire chief saying something else, what is the general public supposed to believe? So again, it's not difficult. It's just one more piece of that accountability, one message, one voice. Good information hopefully will lead to good decisions. The, the scenarios there, those are the ones that most likely are going to trigger an activation of the EOC. Uh, hands down, severe weather, uh, we're activated more often to monitor severe weather than anything else, but we have that all hazards approach. We need to be ready, uh, uh, to assemble the forces, to staff the EOC accordingly to deal with whatever the problem is for as long as that problem lasts. Next up, this is, uh, just outside the emergency operations center. Our office is located in Lincoln, just south of the state penitentiary. And when you walk in the front door before you enter the EOC, this is the, the graphic on the wall. So people who have not been there before, it's definitely an attention getter. The next picture shows a shot taken from the back of the EOC. There are twenty-nine workstations there that are populated by those ESF representatives, and it's literally assigned seating. So communications people sit right next to communications. Our first responders from law enforcement, emergency, medical, fire, sit right next to each other in close quarters with the Red Cross and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. So again, it's assigned seating by design, and again, that, that picture's a little bit distorted, but again, it, it gives, gives me the workstations that I need, that if we have, uh, that potential worst-case scenario, we don't tell those boots on the ground, the incident commander, what to do. We ask, what can we help you do? Is there something you need? When this room is fully populated, it gives us the ability to do that. There are different levels of activation. Um, a, a level three activation is probably just going to be me, my staff, and our volunteers. A good example of that would be to monitor severe weather. Anytime any portion of Lancaster County is any, is in any severe weather warning, the EOC is activated. The technology that we have in place allows us to do that remotely. I've got a computer set up in my family room at home. Uh, if need be, I can run things from there until somebody gets to the EOC, if that's what we need to do. Level two activation, uh, primarily involves county engineering and the city of Lincoln public works because if we're dealing with a weather situation and we anticipate some disruptions, it's probably going to be due to the streets, roads, and bridges are having some incident. Every ESF rep receives notice anytime the EOC is activated. If we're monitoring severe weather, I might not need all of them there, but they're always welcome. The level one activation, we had just one of those a few weeks ago, early Saturday morning, in the wake of that weekend severe weather. We knew that was something that was going to be an all hands on deck. Uh, just a few other examples from there, from two thousand nineteen, signi- significant flooding that spring, followed up by a tornado in March. Uh, we had a deratio, a severe wind event in the middle of December in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the October wildfires that started in Gage County and worked their way north into Lancaster County, the southwest part of the county, and then just a little over a year ago, the tornado outbreak on April twenty-sixth, um, was a level one activation. So again, as I said, we let the circumstances dictate the level of activation. I would like to think we are as prepared and well-staffed as need be. So even if we get a, a no notice, a train derailment that, uh, involves a large-scale hazardous material release, in short order, we can activate and staff the EOC to assist as needed. This is just a little table that shows the number of activations, and those hours are the staff hours of emergency management, my paid staff and my volunteers. So you can see nearly a five-year run. So far this year, we're actually up to eighteen. I built this table before last Friday afternoon when we were in a severe thunderstorm warning for about an hour. Uh, but as I said, uh, the EOC is a turnkey operation. Uh, so like I said, we average about seventeen activations a year with six hundred hours. And like I said, that doesn't include those ESF reps. That's just my EOC paid staff, and, and the vast majority of that time is our volunteer hours. The disaster declaration process, Nebraska state statute, revised state statute eighty-one dash eight-two-nine outlines the process for that. A, uh, state of emergency or disaster declaration that is signed by the Lancaster County Board Chair is good countywide. The city of Lincoln is included in my equation due to the Lincoln Municipal Code. The mayor, if she signs an emergency declaration, it gives her department directors more authority to manage their departments. So as I said, if it's something that is specific to Hickman, that triggers a disaster declaration, you're certainly involved in that discussion and that process, but by state law, the, the request, the, uh, that I need to have is from the chair of the Lancaster County Board. I work closely with the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency. Again, it's not difficult. It's a well-defined process. That incident status report is essentially my first formal notification of NEMA. We have a problem, and we are going to need some help. The lifelines report is discipline-specific to those ESF reps. They're the ones that tell me how bad is bad, and more importantly, how soon can we get back to normal, so to speak. It's a color-coded system that works very well. And as I said, we work with each smaller entity to ensure that we have, have all of our bases covered when it comes to that. Next up, uh, the damage, uh, assessment threshold. That number of four dollars and seventy-two cents, that's set by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. They update that on an annual basis. What the general measure is that if we are going to be eligible, especially for a federal presidential disaster declaration, we have to sustain more than one point five million dollars damage to public property and critical infrastructure. If private property, businesses, homes are damaged, that is definitely in our assessment. But when it comes to figuring whether or not we've met that threshold, that's the official line. It's ba- and this is the, the way that they use it for every county in the country. It's your population based on whatever that annual value is. So as I said, as of 2024, we were north of one point five million dollars. The state declaration, if we issue one at the state level, that allows access to the governor's emergency fund. Again, the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency is my primary point of contact there. And again, I don't specifically request a presidential declaration, that is at the state level. The event that we had just August ninth and tenth is a good example of that. A state has thirty days from the date of an event to officially request a federal disaster declaration. So for the event that we just had in early August, that's where we are in that one. And I believe that's the next slide, should, should show the current declarations. A little over a year ago, we got hit very hard with an extreme wind event on July thirty-first. That did meet the, the threshold. Unfortunately, it was Lincoln Electric, Electric System and Norris Public Power were the two entities that were most significantly impacted. That same with the blizzard that we had in March of this year, did receive the federal declaration forty-eight sixty-eight. And as I said, I was just working with NEMA today to ensure that we had all of our Lancaster County information. County Board officially signed the disaster declaration at their meeting last Tuesday. And now that information is in the state's hands. So that gives you an idea, just kind of a quick snapshot of that disaster declaration process. Next up, I always promote training. The nice thing about this is those first four that are listed are considered basic courses, and they can all be completed online. It's through the FEMA Department of Homeland Security website. You need to have a FEMA student ID number. If you don't have one, and these links are live, it will take you to the basic information. The way I have always sold NIMS and ICS training is rather than it giving you a whole bunch of new information to be, to learn and to adapt, it gives you the opportunity to give yourself credit for the work that you already do. I found that with all of our first-line people. Whether you're in critical infrastructure, public works, our traditional first responders from law enforcement, fire, emergency, medical, there's really not a whole lot of new information in there. It just kind of standardizes it across the board. For those intermediate and advanced classes, there are no shortcuts for the ICS three hundred and four hundred. Not everybody needs to take those, but your first-line supervisors, your mid-level managers, I think it's a good idea. A couple of years ago, they expanded the three hundred curriculum. Now it requires twenty hours that they will hold you hostage in a classroom in order to do that. But like I said, it's good information, it's manageable, and more often than not, rather than grabbing the side of the desk and thinking, what are they talking about? You're checking off in your mind, yep, we do that, we do that, we do that. So again, I just, every opportunity that I get to, to promote that, I certainly want to. Of those three hundred and four hundred level classes, they are offered on a regular basis through NEMA. Its state headquarters is on the air guard base right next to the Lincoln Airport. So again, you have to take the first four, one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred before three hundred and four hundred. But like I said, it's, it's manageable. And even if you just kind of sit down and, and do a, a high-level flyover, like I said, it's, it's manageable, at least in my opinion. I put this in here just as kind of a demonstration. The ID card that I have has my picture on it and a QR code that is specific to me. Salamander Technologies is the platform that we use. We've had it in place for about ten years. The five cards that are up there are products of what are called Rapid Tag. And you can see they come in very distinct colors. A good example of this is if Hickman or a neighborhood in Hickman was inundated with a flood or struck by a tornado. So the sheriff's department and the state patrol cordoned off the area. Well, if you're a resident, you should be able to come and go from your house. So the Rapid Tag system that we have, if you've verified that you're a resident of that neighborhood, we can issue you an, an orange tag. So when you roll up, you show your orange tag, you, we know you're allowed to go in there. The yellow tags may be issued to volunteers who show up to do a debris cleaning. So again, it gives us the accountability on the front end. If forty-two volunteers show up to do debris management in an area, if forty-two people go out, we need to make sure forty-two people come back. So it gives us that safety and accountability on the front end. Even volunteer labor can be counted towards our local match. And that's the nice thing about the Salamander is it will track all the hours that those forty-two people put in. So like I said, and they'll be readily identified because they're wearing a bright yellow card. Perhaps members of the media who are allowed into the area during the day would be issued a green tag. So like I said, it's just, it, it, it's very flexible, it's a great tool to have in our toolbox. And like I said, this is just a collection, it's literally a photo I took of the ones that I have hanging in my office. Again, just kind of an example of one of the tools that we have in the toolbox. And it is Rapid Tags, so literally, they're in go bags. If we've got electricity, a generator to run them, we can generate those cards onsite, like I said, for safety, accountability, and documentation on the backend. I also have a Code Red account, if you're familiar with the terms EAS or WIA. The EAS, and if your TV is disrupted due to a weather emergency, I'm not selling the National Weather Service out, but the National Weather Service is the one that, that issues those disruptions. I can do that, but they take the lead when it comes to weather. A wireless emergency alert, a good example of that was the wildfire from October of 2022. Lancaster County Sheriff's Office gave me a grid and said, "We need to notify homeowners in this part of southwest Lancaster County that they may want to evacuate." We don't anticipate fire being a significant hazard, but the air quality, the smoke is certainly going to inundate the area. So I can open my Code Red account, essentially draw a map, a geofence of the area, and send that out. And the nice thing about the WIA is that's not anything that you have to opt in for. If you have a cellular-enabled device, if you are in the warned area, your device will receive that alert. I just make mention of the Amber Alert and the Endangered Missing Adult. I often get questions about that, how does it work, who's responsible for it? That's the responsibility of the Nebraska State Patrol. Next up, again, I'm not here to tell anybody what to do, but I've had some exposure to the Standard Response Protocol. Lincoln Public Schools, and I believe several other school districts in Lancaster County have adopted it. May be difficult to see, but the logo of our local health department is at the bottom there. They've adopted it. It was built by the I Love You Guys Foundation, they put it out there for use. Again, the nice thing about it is it's standardized language. If the kids know, "We're at the grocery store, we're here, whatever," and over the intercom, they've announced that we're going to secure mode due to a potential threat or hazard outside the building. We need to stay right here. So again, just kind of another one of those pieces to the puzzle where what can we do, again, to, to protect, to promote the health, safety, and welfare of all of us? Standard Response Protocol is one way to do that. Next up, September is National Preparedness Month. My running joke in emergency management is every month is Preparedness Month. But September is specifically identified by FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security. I ask our Lancaster County Board to sign a resolution every year. I have people who are much more skilled in social media than I am to manage our official county accounts, but that's just it. There can be a fine line between awareness and paranoia. We want to do everything we can to promote that awareness piece. So we do that year-round, but as I said, we get that special attention in September. And again, we're out there on the worldwide web. I, it never ceases to amaze me the number of people who are dependent on their devices, and that's fine. That if this is a tool, a mechanism to get good information that leads to good decisions. And as I said, a couple of my trusted volunteer duty officers are the primary keepers of this. Obviously, everything crosses my desk electronically. But yeah, if this is what we need to do to, to communicate, to share necessary information, I'm all in when it comes to that. And we do have information on our good old-fashioned county website. Again, good information leads to good decisions, and that's what I try to do. So I appreciate the opportunity to share some information with you this evening. I will certainly entertain any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Jim? I know we appreciate everything you do and all the stuff that you offer us when we in need. And there's a lot out there.
Jim, do you, are you the one that turns on the sirens or is that? Yes, correct, yeah, the outdoor warning sirens, that I'm responsible for that. We test those the first Wednesday of the month at ten fifteen. Kind of a footnote to, September is National Preparedness Month. The third or fourth week of March is statewide, or, uh, severe weather awareness week. And that Wednesday is the statewide tornado drill. So we always promote the heck out of that. And actually, on our local website, there's a simple fill-in-the-blank form that we promote. We really cater to schools, but anybody. And next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, will be the first Wednesday of the month of year. The outdoor warning sirens, and you practice your shelter drill at home, at work, at school, wherever you are. You think, we'll fill out this form, that generates an email to me to track all of those. But yep, I'm, I'm the siren guy. That, that photo of the EOC was taken right behind the radio console. That's where we activate the sirens in Lancaster County. And we have that, so the blue panel sitting on that first, that, that closest table right there, we have that redundant layer at the nine-one-one center. My department, my office is not staffed twenty-four-seven. But, and there have been times where I've had to call nine-one-one myself because we're, we're monitoring severe weather, and the weather service puts us in a tornado warning on short notice. It's a matter of a few seconds, they can activate the sirens from there.
Is that, is a activated siren just for a tornado or for other bad weather? Or is it just mainly tornado?
Mainly tornadoes. The three criteria that we have is if the National Weather Service issues a tornado warning for Lancaster County, if two of our trained storm spotters who are members of the amateur radio club, if they confirm a tornado on the ground, or if there's another immediate life safety concern. The National Weather Service has different categorizations for severe thunderstorms. One of them is dangerous, where they have incredibly large hail and wind gusts in excess of eighty miles an hour. That's something that if I'm sitting there and we have people in harm's way, I'll activate the outdoor warning sirens.
Do you, if you have a, a warning in Lancaster County, does that mean all of Lancaster County? You're activating the entire?
The, the county is divided into five areas, and our website has that. So the north end of the county is split into the center swath from west to east, which includes the entire ci- city of Lincoln, and then the south end. There's a southeast and southwest. We've got a hundred and three sirens, I can't activate them individually, but I can activate them in any of those zones. So that's what happened. In fact, it was the early morning of August tenth. Northwest Lancaster County, or excuse me, southwest Lancaster County was in a tornado warning for nine minutes. It just included the very tip of the county. I called the nine-one-one center and told them, activate the sirens in southwest Lancaster County. And like I said, there, there's a map and a full explanation on our website.
I think that's the reason I asked, because I know it, it was a couple weeks ago. I think that's the incident you were mentioning where it was like an early Sunday morning.
Yes, it was.
And there was confusion, like looking on different social media, like, okay, where is this at? And where, you know, where is, where are the sirens going on? I hope they did hear them hit. I didn't hear them, but I think they did hit, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's the other thing too with our volunteers, that if the sirens are activated, like I said, I've got them across the county, that's going to be my, one of my first questions when I'm on the emergency management radio channel. I will let them know, the sirens have been activated in southwest Lancaster County. Can you verify activation? And Dawn in Hallam said, yep, they're going off.
So you mentioned preparedness, do you, is there any either tabletops or? Like I know in 2019, we were getting ready for vigilante guard, and then obviously COVID happened and we didn't do it. But is there anything either statewide or even county-wide that, that you guys have coming up or, or that's planned?
Correct, we, and again, that's where I reach out to the individual entities. Lancaster County Engineering is a good example of that. Our county engineer, Pam Dingman, said, "I would like to, you work with my team to identify what would we do during the flood." Well, you need to share your plan with me, and then we need to design the exercise. If it's a tabletop discussion or if it's a functional or full-scale exercise, are we actually going to move people around? Always open to discussion. We have a Thira workshop coming up in October, Thira stands for Threat Assessment, Threat Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment. And I sent that out to all our local entities throughout Lancaster County. It's by invitation only because I'm anticipating about a hundred and twenty-five of those stakeholders across the county, but that's just it. We identified those mi- most likely scenarios. A tornado, a widespread power outage, and a large-scale hazardous material release. We want to get input discussions from all of those. There's a, a great framework template in place. We always have something going on. And that's the other thing, I'm open to suggestion. I have a training specialist on my staff, that's where his time and attention is focused on. It, it, you know, is Hickman interested in testing something? Well, it starts with the plan, that's what we test, and, and we work through it from there. But yeah, always, always open when it comes to that. I have ver- it's, it's very easy for me to volunteer my staff for these. But like I said, it, it's for the greater good, and more often than not, it, it's great. You always want to give credit where credit is due, reassure those things, but then identify those gaps, those areas of improvement. We're in a good place, but what can we do to step our game up?
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
We appreciate you coming down.
I, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, moving on, we'll go to item number seven. Seven A is Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department, Wade?
It's kind of short, but as always, eight-one-one, locate tickets. Those have kind of slowed down a little bit, but we're still doing a few mowing, it's rained a lot. Water and wastewater, we installed meters for new construction, building permits. We replaced some meters, verified what their material was for the lead and copper rule that came out. There were seventy-five residents that didn't respond to that survey. So we are basically contacting them and going in ourselves, and while we're there, we're going to replace the meter. Routine sampling, meter reading, new earth construction. They removed the sludge from that new clarifier so they can assess the damage in case there was anything at the bottom, it doesn't appear. They will be in, I believe, next Wednesday to do, to start fixing it. Johnson Services in town to point repairs on sewer lines and have a few run, a few runs to line. On the streets, Midwest Armor Coat came in and patched most of the south lane on Hickman Road. It's kind of been a sore subject. They will be back on September fourth and fifth, and whatever takes that rest that weekend to finish the job. So, and it's, it will end up having two layers of armor coat on top of it, so which is the oil, and then they put the gravel on top of it. So it's, it's not going to be anything like what it is right now. Concrete was repaired at Tenth and Autumn, as well as on Hickman Road east of the water tower. That was a blow-up that Doug pointed out last time, and then there was also some concrete that sunk. We started replacing the street signs that were made, that were not made of high-intensity material with ones that are around town. The parks, trimming trees on the trails, some of the wind we've had has been raising some havoc. And that new stump grinder that they have, we've ground, they've ground over a hundred stumps so far. So making good use of that.
All right, any questions for Wade? All right, any questions for Wade?
Yeah, do you know where we at on those crossing deals?
I was just talking to someone. So I actually built one today and I got another half one. So I'm hoping by tomorrow, I will have the ones at least up in the air, down by the fire station and I'll see if I know how to program. But now that I got, I got one completely built and now that I got measurements, I think the next ones will go faster. We did get the basis board.
I saw that, that's why I was wondering, yeah.
Well, I've kind of been waiting to see if Dale would come back and he's busy with all these stuff. So we're just gonna start on our own.
And then the, Kelly, I think you and I talked about this, I can't remember. I don't know what we said, but the, the armor coat, was that what they contracted to do or what they are? As far as?
It's what they were hired to do, but it has not been done yet on their first round of repairing that road. So it, the road definitely needs to be repaired in a better manner. Definitely not up to our expectations or our standards.
And that's, and it wasn't, it was, what's that?
And it wasn't to his standard either.
Yeah.
Basically, he ran out of time and the asphalt company was messing him around and not getting asphalt to him on time. And he had some equipment issues and there was, there was some excuses, let's put it that way.
And they, so then, just so I understand the process, they mill it back and do it again or they just go over top of it?
No, so the one, the, the south side is patching. Well, anywhere that, like on the north side, if you notice, they have white paint. Those areas, they'll, they have a miller that goes on their skidler and they'll mill that down until, if it has to go full depth, they'll go full depth. But they'll mill a little bit out, they'll look and we'll, we'll assess whether they need to go, how deep they need to go. And then when that part of it is done, they'll tack it and then they'll put hot mix in there. And those, those will be patched and then they'll go over it with emulsion and they'll actually spray the whole, well, they'll do one side at a time. Spray the whole road with a thick oil and then come over it with gravel and it lays gravel on the whole thing. They roll it in and it might actually sit, when they're done, they might actually sit for a week to ten days of people driving on it to just beat it in the ground. He's probably all seen the state, he's done that stuff. But he's talking at least two lifts or two layers of that, possibly three in some areas. So it's, it'll be completely different than what it is.
And then, if I remember right, the reason we were doing this was, I can't remember the term you used, whether it was alligatoring or whatever on the side.
Alligator cracks, yeah.
Yeah, and that'll take care of it on both.
Yep, so on the south side, it butted up to the trail, so you had the concrete to butt up to. On the north side, it's not, so there's gonna be quite a bit of it that is either popping completely out. So we'll get that line straightened up. They might actually pour or lay a little bit outside that, depending on how deep they go. Yeah, so they'll mill that alligator out until we get to where there's not. And that should stabilize the road. And with the armor coating, it should level it out to where you don't have your wheel tracks in there.
And Wade, you indicated there will be one lane open?
Yes, they said, they, they, they said they could do it under, under traffic. And there is enough room coming out of the roundabout where that actual asphalt starts in the concrete. That even a semi could go around. And they said they would have radios and basically flag traffic.
That's next week?
The fourth and the fifth, he said it'd be here on the fourth, of course, if it rains and pushes back. But I would imagine they would be here until. The biggest issue is the asphalt. And I told him, I said, concentrate on the asphalt because you have timeframes when you can get your asphalt, get that done. As far as the armor coating goes, they'll stockpile gravel, that's all on them. I mean, they don't have to rely on anybody else for that. So once they get the asphalt put in, the patching done, they can work all night if they have to without the traffic.
And then we forwarded that to the school so that the busing routes know that if they want to come, you know, however they want to adjust the routes or whatever's on them.
We can, we can. We did the same thing, Kelly did the same thing when we did Tenth Street with that.
Any other questions for Wade? All right, thank you Wade. Then moving on to item seven B, city code violations, abatements, nuisances and permits.
Not much going on in terms of open code violations currently. There were some trailers, unlicensed vehicles. People, usually when Heidi just calls them, they're taking care of them, which is nice. We do have a couple though that take care of it and then it's right back to it two days later, so. And then citywide mowing, weeds taller than ten inches, notifying the property owners. And then Orchard Place, there's a drainage issue there that they're working together, so.
If we have empty lots with weeds taller than ten inches and the owner isn't taking care of, we take care of it and then we charge them, is that?
Not usually.
I thought that's what we were doing.
We have the ability to, but it's always easier to have the property owner take care of that. Or we'll offer someone we know that'll have a larger contractor and we'll afford them. And then they can hire them to come mow, so they'll have their unbuilt upon lots.
So how does this work also if there's a vehicle parked on the street that the weed get it towed away? Or how does something like that work?
So they wouldn't, the, the vehicle owner, if the license is still current, would be contacted. Because there could be a vehicle on the street that it doesn't belong to any of the neighbors. So they can look up that last license plate if it's available and look it up and try to contact that person that goes through the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. And if we want to tow it, the city has, I believe it's a resolution in place to allow the towing of that.
Because I don't think this is even licensed, so. Okay, just wondering. Any other questions for Kelly? If not, I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Norman, second by Mr. Wagner to approve the reports as given. Michelle, if you call the roll please.
Walker?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Kowalki?
Yes.
All right, item eight, public hearings, there aren't been tonight, so we will go item nine and finish business. Nine A is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash zero three, adopting new municipal code codification and repeal former code. This was the third reading. I think Kelly would like to extend tabling it until the October twenty-eighth meeting.
Yeah, we're going through a few minor edits and some code revisions. Our city attorney, Mr. Hofmeyer, has requested to review it as well and inserting some new regulations in there for us that we're working on. Then we have to take it back to McNally's for their review and edits. And then we would like to bring a clean copy back to you after those edits are made, so it's gonna take a little bit more time.
And you just haven't had time due to budget constraints?
That is correct, we've been working on the budget.
And Walt, you did fill out sheet, if you want to get up and do your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is Walt Nelson, eight two five East Ninth and Hickman. This ordinance has got to be our record for tabling. We're now going on, this is a six month, so it'll be close to eight. This one's important to me because of the, it pertains to how we deal with our citizens in a public meeting. So it's very important to me. I was surprised to see that we're on the third reading already. And I would just like to encourage you, once the staff has got time to finish this, that you take your time. And don't just pass it on to third reading, but make sure that the wording is correct and the way you want it. And don't just rubber stamp it, so anyway, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Walt. I did have a question on that, is the, are the current? I guess ordinances and all that, are they still housed on the site? So the current ordinances of record are there?
No, they are available at City Hall, or if you request copies of them from the city clerk if you'd like. We do email correspondence easily as well. They're not on the city website right now, so we didn't want to mislead any of our citizens because some of them are very outdated. His state statute has changed as well, so we have removed them from the city's website.
They can still access them through us, okay. Is there something on there that says you can contact, okay?
When did you say you expect to have this done?
We're hoping October.
Okay.
The twenty-eighth meeting.
That's when you'll have it back to us or?
No, we want to have it back to you before then, but the next meeting, that would be October twenty eighth.
I would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to table ordinance two thousand twenty-five oh three until the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second. All right, motion was made by Mrs. Zeman, second by Mr. Norman to table ordinance two thousand twenty-five oh three. Till the October twenty-eighth meeting, Michelle, if you call the roll?
Walker?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Johoda?
Yes.
Kowalki?
Yes.
All right, we'll come back at that meeting then. And item nine B, consideration of bids for the Hickman Booster Pump Station. Continuation of last, if you remember, we got the bids for the booster pump up by the water tower. And I think Owen's here tonight to talk about it. And talk about the process a little bit and the estimate.
Sure.
So go ahead, Owen.
Sure, my name is Owen Killam from Olson and I was the design engineer on the booster pump station project. I apologize, I wasn't here on the twelfth, I was out of town when that occurred, so Kelly asked me to come back to answer questions for you. As you can see, we got four bids on the project and they were all, you know, reputable contractors from this area that we've done lots of work with. The bids ranged from one point two million in round numbers to about one point two, exactly one point six million for the high. Our engineer's estimate was about thirty percent lower than the low bid at, we're at one, eight fifty-four thousand. So we're about, when I looked at the numbers, we were about thirty percent lower than Van Kirk. And then Newverth was about thirty percent higher than Van Kirk. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the process.
Why was there so much of a difference between the estimate and the lowest bid? It was a three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar difference. What, what was missed or what was miscalculated on there?
Sure, so the process for putting these estimates together, we use something called means estimating guide. It's just a, a book that lists construction costs for anything you could think of on a project like this. Our general estimate was, you know, when I looked at that compared to what Van Kirk provided us line by line, there wasn't. Some of ours were lower, some of theirs were lower, it was nothing that stood out too much. The big X factor that I found was, I looked at a couple very similar projects. We did one in Nebraska City in two thousand seventeen, it was almost identical to this project. And then we did one at Southeast Community College in two thousand twelve. And when I compared the purchase cost of the building to the labor to actually physically install the building. Nebraska City one was fourteen percent of the, sorry, the Southeast Community College one was about fourteen percent of the purchase cost of the building. And to physically install the building. The Nebraska City one was about five percent. When I looked through the numbers that Van Kirk provided, this one was more like fifty percent of the cost. I asked Van Kirk, just, you know, any feedback they can provide, are we seeing, or is, are contractors really busy right now? Is there a material cost issue, is there delays in equipment and that kind of stuff? Basically, what he said is he's seen material costs alone go up fifteen percent in the past year. There's a lot of anxiety with tariffs that have already occurred and potential more to occur later this year. This is not something he told me, but the labor costs have definitely gone up over the past one or two years. I'm hoping we're not in an environment like we were, I talked to somebody about this the other day. After COVID, we had a weird situation like this too, where people couldn't work in the factories. So we were delayed on all these electronic components that would go in a project like this. And it drove the costs up. And I'm hoping things will stabilize again, they stabilized since COVID, but I'm hopeful we're not another pattern like that. Unfortunately, I have one, one recent bid to compare, so I don't have a pattern to, to go by. But that's, that's what I gathered from the information I collected.
So if I remember right, what the? What was your estimate on the booster pump itself?
So the booster pump itself, the purchase cost was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That's what Van Kirk provided. So my overall estimate with all the work and, you know, the, there's a little bit of work besides the pump station itself. There's onsite water mains, there's gonna be check valve stations that go over throughout town. So with everything together, it was eight hundred and fifty-four thousand is what I came up with.
Because that's what they had, wasn't it, roughly?
What, who had?
The bid, did Van Kirk have that?
Well, the bid, the bid for Van Kirk, their cost for the pump station alone was eight hundred, eight hundred eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, that's, I guess, what I'm getting.
Yeah. So basically, where I got that fifty percent labor cost that I came up with, the purchase of the building was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I just divided this overall number by that and I came up with that fifty percent cost to install the station.
All right, any other questions for Owen?
This would be more of just a general question, but so with us considering the, not vessel, but what am I talking about out there?
A tank?
A tank out there. Is this a cart before the horse scenario, where should we have that ready to go prior to the booster pump? Because wouldn't, wouldn't we be looking at pumping more?
We've talked about that and it was kind of discussed, you know, this will, because we don't know when that's gonna happen. And right now, there's some people in Terrace View really struggling with water pressure. Especially, especially when people are sprinkling. And so I think this is a necessity first. And then in the future, this pump, when Hickman, if it does keep continuing to grow, we, you know, can utilize another water tower. And then this pump will pump from the existing tower to a new water tower, which you'll create your pressure zone with the height of that tower.
So then are we, are we setting ourselves up for, I mean, this is, I guess, for both the, are we setting ourselves up for? Potential decr, I don't even know how to say this, losing more water quicker every summer as opposed to what we're doing? Because we're pushing more and trying to increase that pressure.
If you pump, if you have that pressure, yes, you will seep more water and it's probably, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, and that's, and I guess that's where.
Like in the, in the event of an outage?
Right.
We had an outage, yeah, that, that pump will pump, will keep that part of town in higher pressure, correct?
So I guess that's, that's.
But we have to provide twenty pounds, the state requires that.
Right.
And I think we're, I don't know, what's, we're about forty pounds up there, aren't we, in Summit Terrace View?
Forty-two.
What's that?
About forty-two.
Yeah, and I think some of the concern is also if, if there was a fire, you know, would the fire department have adequate pressure? So I think, I think this is a necessity for right now. And it will add value in the future if Hickman continues to grow. Did that answer your questions?
Yeah. Yeah, it answers the question, I don't know if it addresses a concern, because I think the concern will still be there. Like if we've already, with that one power outage and that kind of just highlighted it.
Right. And I think we'll address that later on in the meeting about the power outage, so.
Yeah.
With the generator being on the agenda, so.
I just don't want to get in a situation if we're adding more homes plus the booster.
Correct.
And we drop it too much and we don't have somewhere to hold more water.
That's correct, and that extra storage out there, when, if, and when that's completed, you know, that'll give you more storage. To run into town if you had a severe outage at your wells too.
Right, right.
You know, Hickman's just using more water every day and we need to upgrade our facilities.
Happens with growth.
What's that?
I said, happens with growth.
Correct.
I would have, do you know if Van Kirk Brothers have ever done anything like this before?
I guess I don't know that for sure, I've worked with them a lot on other projects though and they do a really good job. Actually, I did work on one project with them in, what was the town name? Steel City. And the other town, they put a pump station in to pump water from, the town's, I'm blanking on the town right now, to the west of Steel City. They put a small pump station in and pumped it via transmission main. It'll come to me after I leave here, it's the small town west of Steel City.
But this is just pretty much doing the pipe work?
Yeah, foundation.
Foundation work.
Electrical.
Put the pump station on it. Put the pump station on it.
Yep. And the check valves, yeah. So part of it, I don't know if I explained this last time, but there'll be check valve stations throughout that will, when you turn the pumps on, it'll boost the pressures everywhere north of Hickman Road where the elevations are higher, where the pressures are the lowest. So then we have to put in check valve stations, so we're not blowing everyone out south of Hickman Road, so. Endicott, thank you. Endicott's the town west of Steel City.
All right, any other questions? And this, uh, bid was good for thirty days, correct?
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Van Kirk Brothers contracting from Sutton for the Mr. Pump Station, accepting their bid of one point two, one, one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeman to approve the consideration of bids for the Hickman Booster Pump Station, an award to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting from Sutton, Nebraska in the amount of one point two million, four hundred, one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah, one, one more question, what was that?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine.
The dollars, right.
Is there any more, look, is there any more comments or?
More question, I guess, do you know how close we are to that? Cause I know that's like a two-stage process, well, really three-stage process, it'd be getting the land, then doing the assessments, and then actually putting it up, but.
So right now, I think as we speak, uh, they were doing soil borns today, uh, they started that, so we're progressing, but we're quite ways away from. As far, and Owen, you might give an update, how far you think we're out on that storage tank?
Yeah, so the plan was to bid that in about March of two thousand twenty-six, so it'd be next spring we would bid that one.
And that construction, I'd imagine, is not.
Yeah, it just depends on availability of the tank or whatever kind of tank you go with.
Right, okay.
Couple different options there, so.
How soon do you, well, it's a different subject, but how soon do you gotta know when we, what type of tank you want?
Um, fairly soon, so they're like, like, uh, Mayor said, they are doing the borings now, which does not impact what tank we select, but we need to s- decide that thoroughly quickly, and we can also, if we're going through a couple options, like we wanna go bolted steel versus welded steel, we can also bid it with one as an alternate, if we're, if you wanna see how the costs shake out.
No, I appreciate that, cause that definitely helps ease my concern about that, so.
All right, so back to the motion on the floor for the, uh, consideration of bids, I did have a motion as second. Is there any more discussion on that specific item? Uh, if not, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Borker.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
No.
No.
Kowicki.
Yes.
All right, and the completion date on this was when, roughly?
Um, I don't have this in front of me, it'd be next, uh, next spring, summer. And the main component of that is just the lead time on the building itself.
Correct.
I, I think it had a twenty-eight week lead time on constructing the building.
And the generator too.
And the generator, yep.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think maybe sometime in the future, maybe we need to have a presentation on the project down there again.
Definitely, yep.
And then we can go over that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item ten, uh, ten A is Hickman area, Hickman Area Community Foundation requests to use city-owned property for a skate park celebration at LP Stewart Skate Park. Walt?
Walt Nelson, eight two five East Ninth, Hickman, Nebraska. Um, could I pass this around?
Sure.
Just a flyer.
You wanna hand it to Michelle, she can pass it around?
Thank you. Um, this is a fun one, and it won't cost you a cent, so, uh, you'd be happy to have something anyway. Um, the skate park, uh, was an idea that came before my time with the foundation. I believe, uh, Councilman Norman was on, on staff at that time, uh, we had duck race, um, duck races, fundraisers. Um, but largely the money that came, uh, to us was from the, uh, Seward, uh, family to build that skate park. So we, the foundation was the conduit for the money, and then we in turn passed it on to the city, um, who own the property now. We typically, uh, because the foundation was associated with the Seward, uh, family, uh, we have took, taken pride in having a celebration every year at the skate park. We typically have it the first day of Hickman Hay Days. This year, regrettably, it got rained out. So, uh, we were brainstorming, um, over beers, uh, I guess most of you guys have brainstormed with me over beers. Um, we came up with the idea of doing something, um, in conjunction with our Arts Council. Uh, the Arts Council has worked hard in getting their farmer's market, um, active and going. I listened to their presentation, I think it was last meeting, those people are on fire right now, and they need all the support we can get. We thought if we could have that event at their last farmer's market, uh, we talked to them and told us, told them about our logistics and what they have, uh, maybe we could complement and make this one big family, um, community get-together. We will bring, uh, proposing to bring a DJ which will broadcast towards, um, Jack Scott's place. Uh, it's like, I guess that'd be west, uh, and not towards the street fair because they have a singer there. Uh, we have a precision, um, skate team that comes in and promotes skateboarding, although very few of our kids skateboard, but, uh, if you'll notice, the poster has bicycles and, um, scooters, which they do, uh, use a lot. Uh, so we're just trying to get together, we are complimenting the Arts Council to do it. Uh, in talking to the Arts Council, um, one of the things that I noticed at their farmer's market was they had singers, entertainment, they had food, and they had vendors, but didn't have any place to sit down. Um, so I wondered if the city would be willing to partner with them. Um, and again, you'll have to talk to the Arts Council, but, uh, maybe we could get some tables, some, um, picnic tables from the park and take them down there every Tuesday, or every second, um, Thursday, um, fourth Thursday of the month when they have their farmer's market, so people have a place to sit and relax. It really is, if you haven't been down there, um, this would be an excuse for you to come down, but, um, it, it really is well-used, and it's one of those community functions that I think we should propagate, um, and encourage. So, anyway, I don't know if you got any questions?
Any questions for Walt? Are you taking your skateboard?
No. No, I'll be there with Band-Aids, how's that?
That's probably a good thing.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for Walt? I think this is a, gonna be a good event.
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope it is.
Think it will be.
Thank you.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Hickman Area Community Foundation request to use the city-owned property for a skate park celebration at the LP Stewart Skate Park.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Borker, second by Ms. Zeman to approve the Hickman Area Community Foundation request to use city-owned property for a skate park celebration at the LP Stewart Skate Park on September eighteenth. Uh, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Borker.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Kowicki.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Thank you, Walt.
Thank you.
Item ten B, consideration of bids for Scott's Creek Trail, uh, with that, that's a trail behind Dollar General that we've been working on for quite a while, and I think the bids were opened, and with that, we have Shane from Olson here to, uh, explain it and present the numbers.
Good evening. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our bids, but, uh, we received five different bids, uh, for this portion of Scott's Creek Trail. And, you know, three of them were pretty close together, then, um, the fourth and fifth ones are practically double, but, um, our initial, our estimate, our opinion of cost was about two hundred and, uh, sixty-seven thousand dollars. So we got, we got some good bids, and, you know, all the numbers are competitive, and, um, you know, K two is the low bidder in this situation. Um, you know, typically you would just go ahead and award it to K two. Uh, they're, they're a good contractor, they've done good work. Um, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't here in this situation.
All right, and their bid was, that's small.
Uh, it's two hundred, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
All right, any questions for Shane?
Do you see any issues with the, the completion date, it says substantially, what, what would that mean, substantial?
Uh, basically, all the concrete's poured, you know, it's, it's ready for use. And then, you know, to get to final, it's just cleanup of the area. Um, in this situation, seeding might just hold off until springtime, but for the most part, the trail's completed and ready for use.
And that's got, that dates October thirty-first this year?
Yes. Yes.
So that's pretty aggressive.
Yeah.
And as a reminder, we do have a grant for this project in the amount of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Nebraska Gaimin Parks, um, through the Highway Transportation Program, federal government, um, so there are some qualifications the contractor will be following in regards to that grant for those qualifications. Um, and then the city pays for the, um, expenditures a hundred percent upfront, and then we ask the Gaimin Parks Bureau the eighty percent reimbursement after they're paid, and your city staff will submit all those documentations to them.
It's been a long process.
Mm, nice to have it done.
I will. Any questions for Shane?
Was lighting, lighting was after, is that right? Or was it included in this?
That'd be something we discuss afterwards, yes.
Okay. And then the final payment, so on or before November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, obviously I agree with you, you don't wanna seed.
Right.
So then, I guess what's the mechanism to ensure that that happens? I know, you're right, K two's a very reputable firm, so I don't doubt that they will do it, but how do you?
Yeah, we, we would hold back, save the value of the seeding, you know, for, for final payment, and then.
There's also a penalty provision in the contractual agreement.
You just, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So that, excuse, go ahead, so that penalty, is that after October thirty-first, it goes in effect?
I'd have to read the details of the agreement, and that hasn't been drafted yet. Um, the first step in this process is you guys awarding, uh, the bid to one of the contractors. And then Shane will get busy on that agreement and whatnot, we'll review it and look at it, and then it'll be, um, brought to your consideration for the approval of the agreement as well.
Yeah, but there, there was only one contractor that took exception to the completion date, and all the others didn't have any, any opposition to the completion date, so we're, we're planning on them achieving that.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider K two construction for the Scott's Creek Trail project in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Second. All right, motion was made by Ms. Zeman, second by Mr. Norm to approve the consideration of bids for Scott's Creek Trail Project to K two in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one and fifty cents. Uh, Michelle, if you call the roll, please.
Borker.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Johoda.
Yes.
Kowicki.
Yes.
All right, motion carried, thank you, Shane.
Yep, we'll get contracts going.
Land board is seeing this, uh, progress.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, item ten C, considerations of purchase on a hundred and fifty kilowatt diesel generator for the municipal wells. Wade, if you wanna give your little spiel on this one?
Well, as you know, we ran out of water. Um, so, yeah, so the wells are on a different.
We did not run out of water, well, Wade.
No, we were below.
We went low.
We went low. So, um, the wells are on a separate circuit than town, so literally, we could be not able to pump water, but town just goes on as normal, so there's no shutting people off basically at that point. Um, it just would be a lot nicer and a lot more, I don't know, to, to be able to have a generator that would automatically kick on, like, uh, Jeff was on call and he had, it was pouring rain and it was out, and, and at that point, that was after that windstorm, and Norris had their people out all night long the night before. And when I called Jerry, he said, we're not showing up till six o'clock tomorrow morning, cause my people have to have sleep. I get that for their safety as I'm watching the tower go down, or the, the level. So, we didn't, we didn't get critical or anything like that, but it, you know, it, it, it got low. Um, this, this generator that we're looking at here, um, is definitely big enough that if, in the future, if we ever decide we wanna rework the, the pumps in the wells to put bigger, you know, bigger pumps in the wells to pump more water, this'll, this'll handle us for a long time. That portable one that we have is a ninety KW, this is quite a bit bigger.
And this one's in stock and ready to go with a permit tonight?
Yes, they, yep. Yep, so if you, if you decided.
Get the process going anyway.
Yep, so if you decided that you wanted to do one well or both wells, they have, they have these generators in stock. Um, the only thing that might be a little bit slow would possibly be the transfer switch. But they, they told us they could come in and have everything set up, and have it all hooked up, and have it basically to where if we did have a power outage, we'd have to physically go out there and turn it on. And then it would, and it would take over from there. So, but as soon as the transfer switch would come in, then it, then it's fully automated, just like the water plant and the wastewater plant.
And then Wade, uh, did you get a price on a cement pad?
Yep, four thousand, six hundred, right, four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars.
And that's not included in this quote, so.
So we have ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety for one generator?
Yes.
And then you would add that for six-two-oh?
Yep.
So it takes one to run one well?
Well, yeah, they're mile apart.
Oh, I thought those two were closer.
And this one's going on?
This would go, well, three is our workhorse, that's the one.
And that's the well field to the east?
Yep.
Okay.
So realistically, well, three is the one that, if we were only passing one, well, three is the one that is?
That's the one I would put it on.
The one, yeah.
Yep, because well four is not any, it's just as good a well, but if we pump that one hard, per, say, whatever, then we start affecting like, uh, Harland's pivot, this, this one doesn't affect anybody else down gradient. So, and it's actually a little bit less in iron and manganese too, so it doesn't take as much to treat, so this is what I've always used as my primary workhorse.
So we'd have a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Yep.
All right, Kelly?
Uh, just a couple notes from, um, the co- the company that's has the, the, both generators are in stock at their current location. Um, they will also include a one-year preventative maintenance agreement with each of them free of charge. Um, if both of the options are accepted for both of the generators, there will be a five thousand dollar discount, um, or twenty-five hundred dollars each, but you'd have to buy two to get that additional discount. They will also offer a trade-in amount for our existing mobile generator of fifteen thousand dollars.
So then do we need a second concrete pad for the second generator?
Yes.
So then that would add another four thousand, seven hundred and twenty?
Well, so it, it's a hundred and three thousand. Well, so it, it's a hundred and three thousand dollars per, per site.
I can understand the need for these, but why do we not have multiple quotes on such an expensive piece of equipment?
Um, from an emergency standpoint, they're in inventory at this company.
So you're saying it's an emergency that we need these right now?
If we have another power outage and we lose water service from our wells, that would be an emergency, yes.
It should have been, it should have been in a long time ago and the state, when you dig a new well, they will require a generator. These wells are old enough where the state probably didn't have that rig in yet. So if, if Hickman were to dig a new well, we would, this would be a, this would just be part of the purchase.
Sure, I can understand that, I'm, just from my standpoint, I'd like to see multiple quotes for something so expensive.
Okay, so, so, like, uh, the, the boot, or the generator for this booster station, this is who they would be getting their generator from. So we're, that we're basically getting it from, and they would come in and install it, so we're actually getting it from the people that the contractors would be getting it from. If it, we're buying as direct as you can get.
Well, I guess the que- the question is more of, is Nebraska Generator Services the only place in Nebraska to get a generator?
There's Cummings, but they're more expensive. The, the, they're the ones that are doing our, our, um, maintenance cur- currently right now, but they are a little bit more expensive on their labor. So, and they, they, um, I don't know, they, I've, I've thought about even moving to have these guys do our general maintenance. Uh, they're, they're within a, a few hundred dollars, but we've, I've always gone with Cummings before. These people, you can actually call them and somebody will answer the phone and it's not a computer answering it. And then sends you to over here, to over here, and two days later you might get ahold of somebody, so.
So Kelly, what do we have for a, we'd have two hundred and five thousand six hundred and twenty for the two pads and the two generators, and what do we have for total minus the discounts and stuff? Just a rough, oh, yeah, you're on.
Look at a two hundred thousand dollars.
About twenty thousand dollars, yeah.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So Wade, is it your recommendation that we would do both at the same time?
If you can get that discount, if you think the discount's at that great, then yes, but I would for sure do one for sure.
So with this outage we had, with one well, if we had one generator, would that have?
It, it just depends, Steve, if it's.
It would give you some time to at least put on social media, hey, you know, we have the power outage going.
Yeah.
Cut that to household use.
If it's.
Household use, it would keep up with just regular household use.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's a hundred degrees out for the last ten days and nobody's gonna ju- get up at two o'clock in the morning and shut their sprinklers off, it's all automated. It, you know, I mean, when I told Kelly how much they used in this amount of time, she's like, at this time of day, yeah, they use a hundred and fifty.
At three o'clock in the morning.
There was over a hundred and fifty thousand gallons used.
How many wells are we generally running?
One, uh, number three handles most of the time. Like yesterday, it was, it was Monday's a no water deal, three handled it, we didn't have to use four. But when they start, um, when the sprinklers go on at two in the morning till, uh, basically nine o'clock is when I start catching up. So, on, when it's warm out and they run, the second well will run about four to six hours a day and, uh, the number three will run about fifteen.
And that's really just to give it a break and?
It's to, it's to catch up.
Run the other well for maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, it's to catch up because.
But they're not running concurrently?
Yes, they are.
They are.
So when, when I say that well four is running six hours a day, well three is running that same six hours. So bumps from like three hundred and fifty eight gallons a minute is what well three puts out currently right now, and when both wells are running, we get like nine, nine eighty.
But also s- similar to the booster pump, we got a fire and no electricity?
Right.
And no water coming to town.
Or out of luck.
And no storage.
This should be nine years ago like this.
It all discompounds.
I don't know if we ever discussed, we always thought that portable one would handle it, but.
Right. This should have been done years ago.
It should have been done when we put the water treatment plant in.
And like I said, if, if we would have advanced on that wellfield, uh, you know, then new wells would have been required to have them.
They would have. And I think some of this costs.
The lead time on if you, a lot of these generators, they can be up to a year, I know that booster station we did, it took a year to get that generator in stock.
Right, so.
So if you find one in stock, I mean, you are, you are kind of lucky.
Right, he did say that like a hundred and twenty five KW generator, he did have one that was natural gas like what we'd have at our booster station, but if we wanted a diesel one, they didn't have any of them, that's, they had a hundred and fifty. So, it was, it's kind of a, a convenience thing, we wouldn't necessarily have to go that big, but it's kind of a convenience thing and it would also allow you to expand down the road.
They're giving us fifteen grand for that old one, who knows if they even runs?
It does, we started it that day.
Wade, did they say they'd buy back that one? Do we have to buy both of them to have them buy that back, or just buy one and they'd buy that one back?
No, I think the, the, the fifteen thousand dollars for that portable one, I think they would buy that regardless. The, the five thousand dollars I think is the.
For the both?
Is the, the both, the discount, yeah.
Is it, do you have to have a tank, like a, um, an external tank, something like this?
For, for diesel?
It's, it's built.
No, it's built into it.
Usually it's underneath the, underneath the motor.
Yeah, and they have, they have block heaters on them as well, so that in the winter time they start. And they'll run, they run once a week for twenty minutes to guarantee that they exercise them.
How much fuel you keep in that, I mean, what's the tank?
Uh, I think it's two hundred and fifty gallons or something like that.
You keep that full?
Well, yeah. If we run out of power, how are they gonna fill their truck?
But I mean, I'm just saying, just run that twenty minutes a week.
Yeah.
And you gotta keep putting additive in that fuel or what?
Additive?
Well, it's diesel.
No.
Yeah, you can put a year.
We put, they just, they, they put number one diesel in there.
That'd be just part of the maintenance that you're doing is checking those levels and I guess that's what I'm getting at, is part of the.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we check them and I think I've fil- I, since I've been here in three years, we've had to fill them twice, I think. And we didn't fill them, we just, I never got, let them get down below a certain, certain, I mean, it's three quarters of a tank.
Well, I think we definitely need one, but do we need two though? That's my only, I don't know.
The, the only thing I could say there is, is what are they gonna cost next year? What are they gonna cost two years from now?
And do we have this in our budget? I can't.
I was just gonna ask.
So this was definitely not a line item in our budget, it's been discussed multiple times. Um, it's always been a, if we have extra money left over in the budget, let's get that generator, the last couple of years. Um, I will say because some of our water projects haven't come to fruition, meaning the booster pump hasn't fully come to fruition for expenditures, there is water in the water department to purchase both of these today, that would be on, you're within your budget department of the water fund.
There's money in there or I don't have the money?
Uh, both.
I would say if you have the money, I would get both.
Yeah, and you just never know with emergencies how they might happen, so you may be, um, preparing the city to be prepared for an emergency in our future that we are unaware of that might happen this spring.
Prevention.
Prevention, they.
This was moved back for half hour.
Well, also ice storms are the big ones for wellfields, uh.
Yeah, for, for Norris.
Right.
Yeah, but Norris is all overhead out there, so you're, you're exposed to wind and ice.
Ice storms just seem like they take a long time to repair, so that would give you, granted in winter time, you're not running sprinklers. But you still, you've got a lot of homes in Hickman that.
You still run water.
One other thing to consider, what if well three goes down?
Right.
And then we don't.
Like, like we had where we had to rehab it, right, where we had to rehab it last summer, yeah.
I'm sorry, they said they didn't have two on fifties?
Yes.
You need a total.
We have the quoted generators in stock at our current location, no, I think a motion to approve both of the generator purchases for.
Concrete's gonna, concrete's gonna be somebody else, isn't it?
What's that?
Concrete's gonna be somebody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, the note is that the city would cover the dirt work and concrete pads for each project.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of generators for well three and four.
Second. And the con- concrete work.
You need that concrete where it's in the motion or not?
No, I don't think so, that would not be easy.
Thank you.
Uh, so the motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeman to approve the consideration of purchase of two hundred and fifty kilowatt diesel generators for municipal wells, three and four. Uh, any other discussion, questions? If not, Michelle, would you call roll please?
Ford Kirk?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Rahoda?
No.
Colicky?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Uh, so you'll get ahold of them Wade and get things moving?
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Uh, with that, item eleven, city administrator's report. And eleven A is presentation and discussion of city budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. So Kelly?
Yep, um, one second here. Um, just a couple of brief updates before I go into the budget items. Um, the trial balances have all been prepared, scheduled, and our auditor, uh, Brian Schwartz and Randy Hood from Landman Associates, they are finishing up their reports for the state auditor's office, those should be submitted this week and we will see. Um, if you noticed a low balance in the water revenues this fiscal year, it's because, um, the state's been withholding our highway allocation funds because we have not submitted our audit from fiscal year ending two thousand twenty four, that should be done this week. And then, um, as soon as the state receives those reports, which they'll probably receive them before you guys do because the presentation has to be scheduled for a council meeting, um, the state will release those highway allocation funds for us. So when we're talking about preparation for our, uh, budget fiscal year for next year, those funds being received are being projected in our, um, revenues prior to starting the new fiscal year and they will be in our bank accounts, so. That was that, and I do have the other thing for next fiscal year, we do have, uh, a fifteen year non-rated, uh, bond schedule. Um, so after October one, we're gonna be refinancing that four million dollar sewer bond, um, back to a permanent bond, fifteen year bond. Um, I did ask for a twenty year, you guys can do a ten year if you want, um, I'm trying to weigh the numbers with the, the budgeted numbers and how much revenues we have coming in from our sewer fees and that sort of thing. Um, but I'm gonna recommend we go with the fifteen year non-rated note. You cannot have a twenty year one because, uh, the bonds have to be less than twenty. So they did prepare a nineteen and a half year, but when I was looking at that, um, you're basically paying a lot more interest for a little bit more principal for the fifteen year note, so I'm gonna recommend the fifteen year note, we'll bring that to you for consideration, um, and to get that going after October one. Okay, onto the budget. Um, let's start with, I gave you a stack of papers. And at the very top, you'll see our schedule of our budget timeline. Um, after our discussions this evening, this week I have to send the publication notice to the Voice News. Um, and I'm gonna sh- that publication notice is this page right here. This has to be in the newspaper, we're required by law to have this published, um, in at least four days before we have the public hearings for your citizens. This, after tonight, um, and after the public hearings are set, we can have this posted to the city's website as well, so people can see it, um, in advance time. There are, there has to be copies available at City Hall for anybody who wants to see one as we're going through this process. So I usually have about ten of these printed up at the City Hall Office for any of our citizens. Um, one thing I will show you that, um, the bottom notice, um, it's called a combo hearing. The bottom notice is for the special hearing to set your final tax request. Um, as we had discussed at our prior workshops, we are proposing to leave the tax levy at the current levy of point four four eight because we did have a fifteen cent reduction last year. However, though, due to the values that the county has, um, assessed onto the properties here in town, we are seeing an increase in our assessed values. Um, and that went from three hundred and sixty one million to four hundred and six million dollars, which is a twelve percent increase. The budget forms have been drafted to propose the tax rate stay the same or zero percent change. If you were to only take the same amount of tax request monies as last year, the tax rate would be point three nine nine or be lowered another fifteen cents, which is not recommended. The reason we have to show this on forums is for the transparency regulations of our state statutes. So the taxpayers know that with the higher valuation, if we ask for the same amount of money on property taxes as the year prior, it would drop the property tax rate. This is purely for transparency purposes. And then the other thing that goes along with this, because that twelve percent is higher than a state statute allotment, we would have to participate in Lancaster County's joint public hearing because we are taking that twelve percent growth in terms of cash as a tax request. This, um, is the presentation for that joint public hearing that I have prepared. We are required by state law to attend this. I have to, well, I'm not required to present it, but I am your person on staff that will present it. And then we are required to have one elected official in, uh, attendance of the meeting. Mayor Garing has volunteered to be that elected official this year, Steve Noran has volunteered in the past. Um, it's a very intense public hearing process to go through with the joint. Um, basically with our Lancaster County participant, it will be the city of Waverly, the city of Hickman, Southeast Community College, and, uh, a couple other entities, usually there's about four or five of us sitting up there. Uh, last year we did not have to participate in this joint public hearing because the levy was reduced fifteen cents, so we didn't have to qualify for this requirement, this year we will. Um, so on this presentation, there's basically four things you have to be transparent and share at this meeting. So you're telling them that your two thousand twenty four assessed valuation, um, is the four hundred and six million compared to the three hundred and sixty one from the year prior. You're telling them that the increase of the property tax request is twelve percent. Even though our operating budget that we're proposing is decreasing twelve percent, tax rate would be the, uh, levy the same amount of property as last year and then example down there, so if it was at the point four four eight it's at now, at a hundred thousand dollar assessed property, that would be four hundred and forty eight dollars. But when the assessed value is new for that property and it goes up and it's a hundred and twelve, you'd have to drop that rate to still get four hundred and forty eight dollars from that property owner or the tax request from that one property. The other thing is we share with them our relationships and working together for the transparency with our citizens. So we want to be very clear that Lancaster County sets the values of the properties in our jurisdiction. The city sets the tax levy upon the properties in our jurisdiction and the property owner pays the city's tax levy calculated upon the county's valuation. This is a very common misconception at this joint public hearing we go to. Um, I will tell you that when I've attended this, um, two times in the past, the citizens that come to this public hearing at the county building are complaining about the valuations of their homes. They're not complaining about the tax levy, they're complaining about the values of their home. I did attend a legislative committee meeting, um, today with the League of Nebraska Municipalities who helps us get legislation pushed. There is a new bill that's gonna be proposed that will now affect the county assessors that they cannot assess a value higher than three percent every year, to put some holds on that as well. So we're all trying to work together to, A, not have those values go so high, um, or higher than they need to go, and then keeping our tax levy manageable and low, which last year you guys dropped it fifteen cents, that is very commendable. However, because our tax laws and our budgeting laws have changed for this year, the recommendation is to keep the tax levy the same, take the growth because we are setting a brand new base for all of our future years. So the lid is different now, we're setting a new base and this is in hopes that we are only allowed to grow an amount of inflation that the state will set and a little bit of our growth, it's not a hundred percent of our growth. Our growth was twelve percent, but our tax, um, the growth rate that we can request tax monies from is only five point nine percent. So we can't request tax monies on the whole entire growth, just the calculation that is brought to us by the county assessor's office, which is reflected in our certification sheets that we get every year, these are released on August twentieth. Uh, we got them at four thirty in the afternoon this year, so I was struggling to get information over to our CPA that I work with to do the tax forms. So you'll see this growth value here as calculated as twenty one million dollars. The actual difference between three sixty one and four hundred and six million is forty four million dollars. And in the past, if you keep your tax levy the same, that would be equated to a hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. However, because we are only allowed by the new state regulations to use that growth value of two. However, because we are only allowed by the new state regulations to use that growth value of twenty-one million, not the actual of forty-four, I'm gonna have to a different page within here. This is another one of our sheets in our budget, the state budget forms. So you're allowed by the state a two percent base limitation percent increase. The real growth percentage increase right here, it's that twenty-one million times the prior year value, which is five point nine four percent. That's the only amount of growth we're allowed to go over. And then the inflation rate that the state has allotted us is five point one seven. I'll grab this next page. Yeah, I don't know. This is the page up. My buttons are not working right now. There we go. So when you look on this page of our state forms, you'll see right here there's that five point nine four percent, which is ninety-six thousand dollars. And the five point one percent that the state inflation is, uh, the state is allowing us for inflation is eighty-three thousand. Those numbers combined together is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So even by using these numbers, we're not, it's only about a ten thousand dollar difference, nineteen thousand. So you're not losing a lot of money there. So, um, because our levy is where it's at, it's at a good level and so the draft forms and the publication that's gonna be published is based upon the recommendation of keeping your tax levy the same and accepting and requesting those tax dollars. So not accepting, but requesting those tax dollars. Um, one thing I will point out on these forms that's also new this year is this top number right here, that one point six two three million dollars. That's the actual taxes that were levied, reported from the Department of Revenue. If you recall, right above here, we asked for one point six two two million dollars last year, but we actually received one point six two three. This number's gonna vary every year because nobody guarantees that a citizen's gonna pay their taxes. Someone might go into default. We might getting tax monies from two or three prior years ago. So that number's gonna always be an unknown until we get those numbers from the Department of Revenue for our state tax forms. Um, and that's what our growth value and our inflation percentage is then calculated against, which was last year's taxing authority request that we did. So this year's base is proposed to be set at one point eight million. So we can start at that level next year and then these percentages, I guarantee you, will be much lower than this next year. This five point one seven percent of inflation that they're giving us right now, um, having our discussions with, uh, the cost of living adjustments and the Midwest, uh, price consumer index, those are less than three percent. Social Security's less than three percent. Um, the federal wages, the state wages are like two point seven, two point six. So seeing this five point seven percent progress is gonna happen next year, so we don't wanna lose this percentage this year by not taking it. So the require, the re- the recommendation from the League of Nebraska Municipalities, their attorneys, the auditors, CPAs, your city administrators, um, your city treasurers, uh, this year is to set that base level as high as we can this year. And of course, we're limited by that. We can't go higher than that one point eight, which is that hundred and eighty thousand dollars over last year's request, as shown on this page. However, next year, we can fill some of these lines in to reduce that number if need be. The City of Hickman is fortunate that we have sales tax revenues to help with our budgeted items. We use it for a lot of infrastructure, um, expansions and repairs. Um, we also have Keno revenues we can use. There are some municipalities that don't have that. They're only with that. Um, and so they're seeing zero percent growth rate factor. They have zero percent available to them. Hickman's very lucky that we have as much as we do. Um, the only thing we will be able to put on these lines next year is public safety in our local agreements. And for us, that's only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which really isn't that much of a change if, when you're looking at a one point eight million dollar tax request from your citizens to make your thirteen million dollar budget come together. There's a lot on the state, uh, forms. Sorry, I shouldn't have done that one. There's a lot on the state forms. Um, there's a lot of spreadsheets that go on in the background that we're doing. But that's kind of the generalization of it. I did share with you some spreadsheets. Um, one, if you just wanna look at the, if you wanna look at them, that's fine. I can go over a couple. The part, or the police fund is really easy. We don't have any revenues coming in from the police fund. That is your public safety. That is, um, a hundred percent funded by your taxpayers with your tax request. Um, every year Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, they propose this to us. Our total cost for this next fiscal year is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. We've had discussions on changing the schedule for our full-time sheriff. Um, however, at this point in time, we're just proposing to increase the extra duty cost from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars to help accommodate, uh, our extra duty officer to be here on Sundays, to help regulate some of those golf car situations we're having on Sundays. Um, and we're recommending that for this year, um, after having a meeting with, uh, Deputy Sheriff Ben Howchen and, uh, Captain Vic, uh, John Vic, because there's only so much summertime left people are gonna be using in the next six months with their golf cars and we can just u- literally use our extra duty contract to help police Sunday afternoons with our golf car and ATV situations. And that was our best recommendation. And then next year, we're probably gonna look at maybe what we can change, um, so we don't have to have two full-time deputies in Hickman and double this cost for you. So we're trying to work within those budgetary allotments as well. Um, there's a spreadsheet that I gave you that has debt service on it. Um, we are required, uh, Carrie, I can't remember off the top of my head, what was the name of the entity from the state that sent us that letter verifying that we have enough money to pay our bonds? Was it the state treasurer's office? It wasn't the auditor's office?
It was like a county.
I'll let you think about that anyways.
I'll stick into it, cause.
Uh, the city is required to prove with our loans that we can pay them. So when we budget for our bond payments, we budget for the twelve months of our budget year and we also budget for the first half of the next fiscal year. And it's a requirement by our bonding agencies to prove you have enough money to pay those. And so it's not six, it's not fifty percent when I say the next six months. It's not half of your bond payments. It's what bond payments, whether it's principal or interest, is coming due the first six months of your fiscal year. And those are shown and reflected here on the spreadsheets that I printed out for you. And those are also by line item then on the big pieces of paper that I'm sharing with you tonight. Um, you can see the police department here. We just have that, but I do show you what your police budget fund was for the last prior two years. Um, as an example, we can go to the parks fund and you can see, no, we don't have a loan in the parks department. Let's do water. So if you see at the bottom of the spreadsheet here, there you have your bond principal and bond interest payments of those. That nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and that two fifty-six, that's your one and a half years worth of bond payments. Um, the years prior, that's what was budgeted. Um, but we also have a new loan this year, the one and a half million. There's new loan, that new loan is in there. And then in your wastewater, we have the new four million dollar one that we're trying to put in there as well, but we're out of refinance of four million. That's good one. I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Um, perks was easy, police was easy. Um, in this spreadsheet, you also see line items for capital outlay and capital improvements. And I've given you a copy of the capital improvement spreadsheet with all of the projects we've talked about at our workshops and talking with public work staff and all of that items. And again, keep in mind, this is your capital outlay, capital refund, uh, your improvements. Um, these are projects that we've either had in the budget the last couple of years that we're finishing up, or we're gonna re- have to restart them again, have to rebudget them. You always start from zero with your budget year. Yes, Doug?
Well, question on the water fund?
Mm-hmm.
We only are showing a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the potential reservoir storage pit, storage.
Mm-hmm. That's just the design, that's for the design work.
We're talking about going out for bid in March.
He did not give me that information before I prepared this capital.
So I'm just saying, I think we need to increase that number.
Okay, so here's, here's this. Um, right now, the state budget forms are prepared for publication for me to send out tomorrow. So here's the deal with the budget. Even if, this happened in years past, if something changes in our fiscal year, we can amend our budget. You can amend your budget higher or lower. We always have that opportunity. The thing is, we're on some tight deadlines right now that we have to meet. And when we don't get information from the other government agencies that are supporting us with our numbers for our budget, it's a hard time. It's a very tight timeframe. As you can tell by the time frame I've given to you, we don't have much time. And we do have, we have been scheduling extra meetings. Um, we're scheduling three meetings for the ordinance, just in case you guys decide, um, to not waive the three reading rule. We've got that, going another meeting for you guys as well. Um, but I think, and I actually feel confident, we can probably pass this as this. But if the project becomes viable and does happen, which it very well could, we can amend the budget at that point in time.
Hey, I don't want this to stop us. We got, we're gonna bid on, in, at, at March like he hopes.
Right. If you go to bid.
Surely we're not sitting there until next October to do anything.
No.
No, you bid it, but I don't know when they, you know, when they would start.
You know, there's a way for me to bump this though without changing the tax request.
I think they sit, sit there six months before they start.
I don't know, Doug.
I'd hope something gets done in twenty-six. Some work.
Okay, how about, how about this? So here's a way we can play with these numbers. So I have the full one point three million dollars in for the booster pump. Some of that's gonna get paid before September thirtieth of this year. There's a couple more hundred thousand dollars potentially.
Well, I'm just saying.
So there's ways we can work with these numbers.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't want that to stop any progress in that work.
Okay. I can, I can call tomorrow and I can move this number. How much bigger do you want it?
Well, Kelly, I'm just saying, if, if it'd be easier to amend it
Mm-hmm.
later, that's fine. But I'm just putting that out. That number needs to grow, I think, hopefully.
You just don't wanna be stopped just cause it's a hundred thousand dollars.
It's a thousand dollars. Cause it wasn't in the budget.
Right.
Well.
Once we get moving, you want to.
Whatever we need in the budget for that, it better, we need to get it in, I mean, in March.
I'm thinking of it is.
I mean, clear set the bid.
Admit it then.
Well.
Have you ever amended the budget before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
Uh, one year we actually were under a super tight timeline and we were having difficulties with our publication source. Um, and we're, we're required by state law to have the public hearings published four days before the actual public hearing. Um, there was a calculation error in the spreadsheet that I had discovered, um, and we had to fix that because it was published off, so we had to republish it. And literally there were staff members, the prior mayor, myself, in this room, restuffing the Voice newspapers with our public hearing stuff. It was very, it's very, but we had to have, we we have to submit this to the state by September thirtieth. Whether you think your budget is right or wrong, we have to submit it by September thirtieth. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Um, the nice thing about it is if you guys decide to do something different within, is it twenty days, Michelle? Within twenty days, if you guys decide to do something different afterwards, we just have to do another public hearing notice. However, the other process is just amending the budget for a larger project that might come along.
And amending the budget is just moving the monies from department to department within line items. It's not moving.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're not gonna change the tax request.
Right, right.
Right, it's just a matter of.
Yeah, you can't really change the tax request because that's set, uh, sixty days is ready to summer.
Okay, let's say we need a one point three for the story, for the booster pump, alright?
Yeah, yep. Low was came in at one point two.
Let's say, let's say we need, let's say we need, come March, we say we need another five hundred thousand to cover us in twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Can we just, can we increase the budget five hundred thousand?
No, we're just gonna report our expenditures, basically. Cause you're not redoing the ask. You're gonna report, uh, let me get to the other page.
But that's due.
Yes. Oh, let me get here. So I'm going to get up to the top of this paper and go through the state forms really quick. Come on, go. I don't know, all my, I, the laptop is being a little slow.
It's fine, Kelly. I just.
Does it have to come out of the water fun?
Well, it's helpful when I show you. Nope. Um, so you've got money in reserves, so you don't have to worry about cash per se. Um, so we start out. Okay, beginning balances and transfers. So, uh, last year we started out with eight point two in the bank, six point four. This year we're proposing to start with five point eight million dollars based on projections. And just imagine your, you know, your budget is an estimation and a really good guess estimate of what we think we're gonna do next year. It doesn't always happen like that, but we do follow it as strictly as we can. Uh, there's always a balancing with the treasures. We always kinda estimate that one. So you're looking to start the budget year with five point nine in cash. You're gonna request one point eight from your, um, taxpayers. And then there's some other receipts with motor vehicle rates. There's highway allocation funds. And by the way, these are, uh, lower than last year's projections, um, of what the state's gonna give us because of, uh, fuel receipts. They, they reduced theirs as well for so much money they thought they were gonna get. Anyways, motor vehicle fees, um, uh, state receipts. What is this one? We don't get municipal aid because we don't qualify. Motor vehicle tax, your local option sales tax, that's been going up, I think, the last couple of years. We bump it about twenty-five thousand every year. You never know what you're gonna get in sales tax, cause it depends on what people are shopping for and if they're spending their money. So, um, based on the projections, we go back twenty-five thousand every budget year for that. Um, transfers, this right here is, uh, that highway allocation match of twenty-five percent. We have to match every year that you just approved the street superintendent for, and then next meeting you'll have that transfer for this fiscal year. So we're projecting ninety thousand for next year, which is twenty-five percent of what we think we're getting from them. So anyways, you're starting with resources at about fifteen million dollars. And that's how much money we think we're gonna bring in over the whole year, including the five million we have to start with, okay? These monies don't all come in at the same time. We don't get that chunk and change of October one and then get to spend it all year long. They come in throughout the year. They come in as people pay their property taxes. They come in as we are billing for utilities and they're paying their utilities. So, um, it's, that's the cash flow management we try to do in-house as well. Um, but overall, it's a fifteen point nine million dollar budget, but that does include a four million dollar refinance. So, and then we have to keep, uh, cash reserves. We can keep some there, um, which is twenty-four percent is what we're proposing for the cash reserve. And I think that number has to be less than thirty percent according to the rules. Um, there's your tax request on page two, A. Um, this would be the, um, disbursements and transfers. So in that spreadsheet that I was showing you prior, that you guys have on the big pieces of paper, this one that has like your general, electric, water, sewer, all those things there, and all your numbers that we are going to propose to spend, they are all summarized in here. So the state doesn't care what we're gonna spend on wages or salaries or taxes or supplies, repairs and maintenance. They only care about the big number at the bottom. So what we try to do is stay within those. So our operating expenses, um, for your general fund is one point one million, capital improvements twenty-five thousand, capital outlay ten thousand. Uh, the difference there is capital improvements attached to the ground. Capital outlay is pretty much anything over three thousand dollars. Um, so anything, anything we do to this building would be a capital improvement, cause the building is attached to the ground. Um, debt service for this building, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, and then that transfer out from the general fund to the street fund is ninety thousand for that highway allocation. Uh, hundred and sixty-five for your public safety police. That's the one fifty-five contract plus the ten extra duty. Streets department, operating expenses, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, capital improvements because we gotta try to get sixty-eight street done on your one-six-year plan. Capital outlay, uh, Parks and Recreation, these numbers, capital improvements includes, uh, again, another six hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for Terrace View Park. We will try to get some, uh, grant money for that. We will apply, applying for some grants. We'll just have to figure out some timing there. Otherwise, that is backed by Keno and sales tax revenues. Um, electric utility, um, this one I wanted to bring to your attention, cause you're, we're not selling power anymore. So this is our first year not having any revenue from power. So the electric, uh, department, you're only gonna expend two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And when we had discussions about the electric lease with Norris Public Power and we're like, well, you can go up to, what was it, twenty, twenty-five percent of your lease agreement, but I think you guys went with ten percent. So that ten percent is only bringing in two hundred thousand dollars and that's projected. It comes into the general fund and that's right here, highlighted in green. We've only gotten two payments right now. They've both been under fifty thousand dollars for the two quarters. So we're projecting we might get two hundred thousand dollars. But when you're looking at your electric fund, um, and that money is that we're gonna use that for that, because of our debt service we still have on there, you're in the hole two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We don't have any, I mean, the general fund will supplement it, so don't worry about that. But when you're looking at before, when your electric revenues would always support your electric expenditures, that's not gonna happen this year, cause you only got about twenty-seven thousand dollars coming in in revenues and those are off your building permit fees and.
How long's that bond go?
Uh, we only have about two years. Uh, we only have about two years left on it. Um, I, I think we'll be able to squeeze by on it without a problem, because I am not gonna recommend changing that lease agreement percentage for our citizens. Not recommending it at all, I think we can figure it out, which we have here. So, your expenditures, the loan's like a hundred and fifty, the other ones are small, the other things we have in here is insurance. You know, we just kinda do that across the board, there is some repairs and maintenance that might be happening, but. It's the first year to have a look at these numbers, so we'll see how next year plays out as well. And we'll have a better look at those revenues from the Norris lease agreement too, so, I think we'll be alright, we can make it work. Um, what else we got going for you here in here, lots of fun stuff. Alright, so those are your expenditures as reported there, based on not changing the tax levy and taking what we can this year at our new base level. These are estimated, um, dispersments or expenditures for this current fiscal year, and again, they're just an estimation. The budget is all about estimating everything, the audit is when we get real numbers and we really see what we did. But these are all estimates to tell the citizens what we're gonna spend their, uh, money on when you request the monies. Then we got proprietary functions, there's not gonna be much more to this, just because, uh, it's, it's new this year, it's brand new, so it's basically take the tax money. Break it out through your budget, we've got plenty of infrastructure items to spend it on that are important to the future of Hickman and your citizens, so I think we should be alright. There's that notice again, that I have to share again. Um, what's kind of unique about the, this year's state budget forms? The forms do all work together for reporting purposes. But calculations we're doing on page eight and calculations we're doing on page eleven, and the calculations we're showing here in this budget hearing notice. They're all for different regulation purposes, they don't all work together to come up with the one number. They're independent reporting of state statutes that we have to report on, and that's one of the reasons why these state forms get a little bit confusing. That's just it, that's why they're confusing, cause the different forms you're reporting because of a different state statute and they changed the rules on us, so now we have to do it this way and this way and that way, so. I guarantee you though, Tony got everything right this year, we're got it good, I think we've got a good budget, we've had good discussions, um, we have a lot of projects to look forward to. Uh, your general operating expenditures only went up like maybe three percent. Um, utilities, we always bump utility bills up five percent automatically from year to year, cause they're a little bit more higher. Um, and then it's your capital improvements that we want, so, and need, should say need not want.
Kelly, on the street fund, we've got the, uh, Scott Street, Scotts Creek Trail in there.
Mm-hmm.
That's coming out of this next budget or this budget?
Uh.
Should we just pass it?
It'll probably be a little bit hot in here.
Okay.
We had the budgeted, um, we had that project budgeted in full for this fiscal year, the fiscal year prior, and now it's being prepared for the next fiscal year. So we have to, we, you just never know how those projects are gonna land, and since we haven't started it, I didn't even know it was gonna get started, because we had a delay of game with the reporting for those federal requirements. And we do have to report it in full, because we're asking, we have to pay for it a hundred percent and then ask eighty percent reimbursement from the state. And again, the state auditor wants to see the expenditures, so we can't only report twenty percent, even though that's our requirement for the grant.
So just looking through the capital outlay and improvements.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like there could be potentially like one point seven that if we needed to shift over.
For what?
Like, in, in the capital improvements. You know, if there was, if, if we did run into a situation where we need to move some budget things. There could be potentially like one point seven million of stuff that's more want than need, which is I think what you were talking about Kelly, we.
Yeah.
We can prioritize saying, alright, you know, we don't do six hundred and fifty thousand here, we don't do a hundred thousand here, we push it all to the necessity, which is that. I mean, to be frank, that's the only reason I voted for the booster pump, is to get that, because we're gonna get the, uh, monitoring done next year, so I'm with you, I mean, we have to get it done.
Well, yes, yes.
Get it, get it done.
Hopefully operational for twenty seven.
Right, right.
Ca- is there that, uh, million dollars money that we could, that we could spend?
In the water, yep. Yep.
Oh, you're talking the EPA deal?
Yes, but see, that really, uh, that, um, isn't coming into play right here at this moment, cause it's not in our revenues, but.
It can be in the back of our mind, but.
Yeah, so, just because, uh, uh, municipal entity, excuse me, a political subdivision gets money during the year that they weren't expecting. Um, if you're gonna expend it, say if we just got, someone donated a million dollars to the city, it's a, for some reason. Please, someone donate money, see, if someone donated a million dollars and like, I want you to do this with it. Even like says, put in a pool or wanna pay for the park, well, if we don't have that expenditure on the backend, that would be a reason to amend our budget. As long as the expenditure is in there, the state really doesn't care where the monies are coming from, but in this budget form, you're proving where that money's coming from.
Have we, speaking of the grants, are there other grants out there that we could potentially be looking at for that, um, specific project, whether it's?
So, last, last year, that Bureau of Reclamation, that's where I was looking at for the water meters. That's a small business, or a small water, uh, uh, system grant there, they also have a large sized one that, that is for. S- uh, storage, it's for water towers, it's for dams, it's for, so, they claim that towards the end of the summer here, which is now. That they'll try to open that back up, because you know, Trump put the kiboshes on all that stuff, so. I have a, an email in with Justin German to, when they do that, hopefully we could, because that, that's like four million dollars you can get for those projects.
That's a federal grant.
Bureau of Reclamation, yeah, it's.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna forewarn, if we've already bid out a project and then we get a grant for it, the contractor may not like that. So contractors need to know in advance when we're bidding, if there's grant monies involved, and it kinda like Scotts Creek Trail in the email I sent you. There are so many federal requirements that that contractor has to fulfill, and if we get those grants. One, if, if Hickman qualifies for those grants, there are so many grants out there that we don't qualify for, because our median income level of our households is too high. So there's a lot of grants we don't even qualify for, um, so, that being said, when we bid those projects out. Those bids are gonna come back higher, because the contractors have to do more reporting, they have to buy things differently, and there's requirements there. That are held upon the contractor when we hire them to do our job, and they purposely bid those a little bit higher, because of those requirements. So sometimes, and this is a real conversation that, uh, we like to have in the office, um. Not getting a grant is sometimes better than, and then just paying for the project, because getting a grant is gonna increase the cost of that project. So instead of having an increased cost for the project, the engineering, all of the, um. Reports that are necessary, and you have to have done by an engineer or the EPA, that sort of thing, keeps that cost down and we can afford to pay it.
So with that, that he brought up, I know it's just budget, but we have to put in that request to get that money moved to water, right?
Yes.
So when does that need to get done? I mean, are we gonna try to use that for out, I mean, why, why wouldn't we use it?
Whenever I. This is not the right month to ask you that question.
Well, but I'm just saying, we probably need to know before March.
Yes.
We can do that.
Yes.
Cause I.
And what's the stipulations on that money?
It's just, so right now, it's an application form that I have in my office, it's an application form, I have to have, um, Congressman Flood. Do a letter of recommendation for the change, which he is supportive of, I was already talked at the office, we've had verbal communication, I have the directions. It just needs to get filled out and done, so, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, I think, like you, if there is restrictions to that, like the US made whatever.
Right.
They didn't know that by March.
Yep, so, because of those restrictions though, that million dollars for the water fund will also help in the future when sixty eight street is redone. And we're gonna increase the size of those water mains, because that's gonna be, that's, those are federal highway transportation funds for the, um, county anyways. So if the million dollars goes with that one, we're, the project's already held to those standards. So, just saying, there's another project available after that one if we don't hit that timeframe.
I'm saying, we got it set in there.
Yes.
What, what'd you say the deadlines to amend your budget is, or is?
We can amend it anytime we want to.
Anytime you want.
Uh, actually, if your expenditures change so dramatically, you have to amend it before September thirtieth.
Is this a big change, would it, I mean, we would have, no?
No, um, I think Travis is on point when he's, um, looking at those numbers, saying there's some things we can play with in here. And there's always a level of playing in budget, because again, it's just an estimate. And we're not allowed to take, you know, as, there's, we're, we're still restricted on what we can ask our taxpayers for, so.
Did we get an estimate on that?
On the tank?
On the tank, yeah.
Not yet.
Mm-hmm.
Well, when we gonna decide what concrete steel, what?
Same as, yeah, right.
What's that?
Concrete steel, what are we gonna do about it?
Right, I think that's.
We should watch, we get a little further along, well.
Okay, that's what I have for you for now, um, if anything is clear as mud, um, ask me questions, but not tomorrow, the next day, just kidding. You know, my door's always open, phone's always available, so. That's what we have prepared, I'll be sending over the public hearing, um, notification to the voice news tomorrow afternoon, so they have that, it'll be published. Um, so our public hearing will be September ninth, and then, um, I have to prepare more forms for the county for the joint public hearing. Um, and I get that submitted to them before August twenty ninth, so that's gotta go out this week as well, and there's another whole forum and numbers, that fun stuff. Uh, September fourth is when this public note's been published in the newspaper, it'll also be posted around town, and there will be. Uh, forums here available, um, not my worksheets, because the worksheets can kinda change throughout the year. Because it's the state budget form that's available for our taxpayers or citizens or whoever wants to see it. We can email it to them, we can, they can stop by and get a paper copy, whatever they want. Um, special meeting, alright, so budget hearing September ninth, that's our city council regular meeting, we'll do the first read of the ordinance, um, for the appropriation of funds. September sixteenth is a second read, and then September eighteenth, I'll have the Lancaster County Joint Public Hearing with mayor hearing in attendance. And then September, there's our third read for that budgetary, um, ordinance, which is setting the tax levy by resolution, so you can actually set that tax levy September ninth. And then we'll just do the appropriation ordinance, um, the two successive meetings, if it doesn't pass with the waiving of the three reading rule. I would like to request that our ordinance for budget appropriations passes with the waiving of the three reading rule. Um, it makes everything we have to do for filing in a timely manner. It's, it expedites the process greatly for your staff, and we have to process everything after you guys make a decision. There's a lot we have to do after you guys pass a, a rule, a budget, a new regulation, so, and this is, these have harder deadlines.
Alright, anything else?
No.
Any questions for Kelly on her administrator's report?
I guess I have to follow up to what we were talking about, maybe this is for, I guess for both of you. Would it help to have on the agenda here, either the next meeting or whenever to try and, so we have numbers to make those adjustments on, have Olson. And try and make a decision prior to setting the budget for the next.
For the tank?
Yeah.
Uh, I think as soon as possible, I, I think they're doing those soil boring, so let's see what those.
Yeah. Right, right, and we do need to wait for that, but.
Your side, just a ball, a good ballpark in the tank, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, to be able to see, uh, what we're talking about, are we, are we?
Well, how much did that cost, it's probably gonna hit us in twenty seven. I mean, if they're just doing earthwork, whatever else they gotta do, apparently, I mean, they can maybe lay a pad for, I assume they're going on a concrete, concrete pad.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know.
We have goals, but projects take time, I think you guys have all witnessed, a delay of game in a lot of our projects, it happens. So I'm not so worried about that line item only being for the engineering, for design and for bidding. I'm not too worried about it, because I've seen it many times where it just doesn't.
But we do have to.
Very next fiscal year.
We do have to buy the ground.
Yeah.
What do we buy the ground?
We've got.
We've got money in there for that, that's, that, that can be done this fiscal year.
Okay. That could be ideal.
Yes.
I think you're right, to get a rough ballpark and sort of make those in the back of the mind, where it could cost.
They said pay for the ground this fiscal year, you got a month.
Mm-hmm.
We got any paperwork on it, done on it?
Waiting for some boring results.
We got work to do, I don't know, don't you? Just saying, you gotta.
We've had an example from another land purpose last year, we've got reset number from a million dollars down.
We got thirty days.
Alright, I think.
I think we gotta prove it too.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kelly on her report? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city administrator's report.
Sorry. Alright, motion was made by Ms. Zeeman, second by Mr. Norm, to approve the city administrator's report, uh, Michelle, if you call her all please.
Borkert?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Rohda?
Yes.
Paul Wiki?
Yes.
Alright, item twelve, governing body comments, course, council correspondence, uh. League of Nebraska Municipalities two thousand twenty five annual conference is September twenty fourth through the twenty sixth, let Michelle know if you're interested in attending.
By when?
Eleventh.
By the eleventh?
She said last time.
Yes.
So we got another meeting before that, right?
Yep, the ninth, so, let her know by next meeting. And then, the dedication and ribbon cutting ceremony for the new League of Nebraska Municipalities building, and it's at one three three five L Street. On September fifth, two thousand twenty five, from eleven to two. So I think there's an invitation for people if they wanna, uh, come and watch it.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building, I was in there today and the tour, and they have pictures up from a lot of different, uh, municipalities in Nebraska, um. Beautiful building, and there'll be some elected officials there and the contractor and all that fun stuff, cookies. And Lynn said, really good sandwiches, she was like, they're gonna have really good sandwiches, she goes, if not, just come for the sandwiches. You guys gotta know Lynn Rex, it's great.
Alright.
If you could let me know by August twenty ninth on that one?
August twenty ninth? On the conference, right?
On the ribbon cutting.
Oh.
They're allowing it on the conference.
Okay. Alright, item thirteen, uh, meeting adjournment, making a motion to adjourn.
Sound good.
Motion was made by Mr. Borkert, second by Ms. Zeeman to adjourn, Michelle, if you call her all.
Borkert?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeeman?
Yes.
Rohda?
Yes.
Paul Wiki?
Yes.